Thank you for joining our June twenty fifth meeting. We will enter, we will entertain, not enter, we will entertain motions.
I would like to enter into executive session discussing the history of particular individuals, possible litigation, and the annual evaluation. Secondly.
Moved by Morris, seconded by Jill. Questions, conversation, debate, dialogue. All in favor? That is unanimous for who's in room. We will do our best to be back at seven P M. It will most likely be seven ten P M. But we will see you at seven ten. Thank you very much for seeing him. Turning from executive session, first, I want to extend our apologies and rephrase that. I've tried to learn not to apologize for things that I'm not personally responsible for.
Sure.
We recognize that we have taken a considerable amount of time in our executive session, and that may be an inconvenience to folks, and so we want that to be known. This is the last meeting before July first, and the school and academic calendar year changes on July first, which means there are any number of significant things for the board to discuss at that point in time. And in order to give those items due consideration, debate amongst ourselves, we decided that we are going to have those conversations rather than try to rush them and make ill-informed conversations. So for the folks who have waited patiently, we appreciate your patience and we recognize your patience. I want to begin by saying that. I also want to begin by acknowledging that today was the Ithaca High School, and if I'm not mistaken, as we speak right now, the L A C S commencement. As someone who is steeped in academia, I'm very much aware of what the word commencement means, and I love commencement ceremonies because they do mean a beginning and not an end. And I apologize to the families at Ithaca High School that I was not in attendance as board president of those commencement ceremonies, as I said to my board colleagues. I believe my spouse may be watching, who had reconstructive knee surgery yesterday, and so I'm hoping my family is taking good care of her. Nicole, I hope you're well, and I'll see you shortly as well. I know I should not say that. Nicole, I'll see you next week. So again, I just want folks who are in the room to know that the board is aware of your time, and we don't take that time lightly. We are returning in from executive session. We have a couple of quick items before we get to public comments, and I'll leave my directions for a public comment in a minute. But the first item is to explore whether there are any modifications of the agenda.
I would like to move that we remove part of the consent agenda. Specifically, I suggest that we move the extension of executive contracts from the consent agenda to school district business eleven point nine.
So that would be removing item, or excuse me, moving item seven point seven and placing it as agenda item eleven point nine.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Questions, debate, conversation. All in favor? All opposed? Any extensions? You're all set, Emily, with that? Fantastic that the motion passes, so eleven point nine would be as we stated. This will bring us to agenda item four point one, which is public comment period, the hearing and receiving of delegates. Reminder, even at this late hour, that we have a timer set according to board policy that folks are able to speak for three minutes. You will hear the timer go off. I will do my best to let folks finish their last statements as they happen. If we continue, I will as politely as possible interject, and I may have to stop comments, just so folks know, we have a long list of folks who have signed up to speak. Please do not mention anyone by name in good or bad ways. That's according to board policy. That's not me saying that. If you are to mention someone by name, again, I may interject. And my colleague, our vice president of the board, Moira Lang, will read names, and please, as much as possible, provide grace as we do our best to pronounce names. We would ask for you to come up to this microphone here, or this microphone here, if you'd like to sit, and do feel free to pronounce your name correctly, so we have it into the record.
First person on the list who signed up to speak virtually is Zach Nguyen. Okay. He is not currently online. He'll come back. And forgive me, for I know I'm going to mispronounce the first name. Shaquie Zhang.
Let's talk, so I can get your focal hints. Yes, yes, please take your time, please.
It's fine, thank you. Thank you so much. As I feel like it's necessary to come to the in-person meeting to express my opinions. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Shiki Zhang. I am a professor in the nearby university. I'm also a resident of Ithaca, and both of my kids are attending and will attend ICSD schools. As a Chinese family, we place a strong emphasis on educating our children about Chinese language and culture. We are proud to see that our culture is increasingly recognized and celebrated in the community thanks to the device, diversity and inclusive environment promoted by the district, and thank you all for your efforts in this regard. One of the significant effort was including Chinese in the middle school language program. This has been a fantastic opportunity for our community's children to learn about Chinese culture. However, I have heard that this excellent program has been cut due to budget constraints for the next year. This is very shocking to us, especially given the rapid growth and success of the program. Among all the adjustments involving the five point seven million dollar reduction in the May to the May proposition, what factors or the valuation outcomes led to the decision to cut the Chinese language program? Is there any possibility of continuing such a valuable program? Drawing from this, when I, when the districts invest time, effort, and resources to initiate an educational program, how are such decisions evaluated and reviewed to ensure long-term consistency? Especially since the outcomes of these programs are not immediately visible. In Chinese, we have an old saying about education. It takes one decade to grow trees, but one century to cultivate people. However, this program's lifespan is less than three years. I have also heard that this district had a Chinese program about ten years ago that has canceled for various reasons. Now, the same situation has happened again. This undermines the credibility of such programs, as we all know that learning, especially languages and cultures, takes time. My final question is that how can they, how can we avoid such situations from occurring? Avoid reinventing the wheel when new programs are initiated, and increase the longevity of educational programs overall to bring the best learning outcome to our students? Please reconsider to continue the Chinese program. Thank you for attention.
Cindy Chen.
Thank you. Dear students, parents, and board members, I'm Cindy Chen, one of the Mandarin teachers at Ithaca City School District. I have taught Chinese as a foreign language for nearly two decades. Before coming to Ithaca eight years ago, I taught at international schools in China and Singapore. This year, I joined Ms. Zhou teaching Mandarin and ICSD. For, I want to address the implications of canceling the ICSD Mandarin program and share my concerns. First of all, I want to advocate for my current eighth grade students. For them, Mandarin is not just an elective course. It's New York State requirements, because when they chose this class, they had the intention to complete their three-credit sequence. Students are required to complete three consecutive years to earn a region's worth advanced destination. While they can also have the option to complete five credit sequence in five arts in place of the language requirements, many competitive universities like Cornell, they will require at least three credits of language. So this decision will impact most students' high school trajectories and impact their ability to choose other desired courses due to scheduling conflicts. After investing two years in Mandarin, losing these opportunities feel punitive and discouraging academic risk takers. As a school, our heating curriculum should be building risk takers, right? But now it feels like we are punishing them because we're taking away their learning opportunities. And there's been discussion about the district's reallocating resources to support students retaking languages. After they drop Mandarin, we spend maybe money tutoring, help them to quickly catch up other languages. So I just thinking maybe these funds could sustain the Mandarin program, at least for the high school freshmen. So please consider provide alternative for our current eighth grader Mandarin program. Secondly, I noticed that the learners here at Ithaca are relatively behind in their learning abilities of a new language and their awareness of another culture, based on my own experience. For instance, in the recent class discussion about the history of Chinese characters, I normally use the inquiry-based learning way. I asked them, how long do you think would be the Chinese character's history? And some sixth graders, sixth graders, they estimate the, the history of Chinese characters to be merely one hundred or two hundred years. That was a shock for me. If they say one thousand, I think should be okay, one more zero, but it's not just one thousand, by the way. So that reveals a profound lack of awareness about one of the world's oldest cultures. And this ignorance highlights the urgent need for comprehensive cultural education, especially in the diverse community like Ithaca.
A final statement, please.
Okay, so please consider reinstating the Mandarin program.
Melena Angelopoulos-Gula.
Oh. Good afternoon. My name is Melena Angelopoulos-Gula. I am an eighth grader at Duet Middle School. I take Mandarin as a language, and I am deeply disappointed by the decision to cut the Mandarin program. I think that it is very disrespectful also how the teachers came to know about this. They actually learned from sixth graders who were like taught, they were told to not take Mandarin as a language next year, and they should pick another language because there was no Mandarin. So they had to learn from their own students and not like a sincere email or the people in power, just anybody even at the school. And I think that that was very just disrespectful. But I have taken this language for two years, right? I, I love this language, and I also love the class itself. It has taught me so much about the culture and just the place of behind, just not just the language. We have done so many like amazing things. We have like learned about the food, so many festivals, there's so much meaning and deep like, like it fascinates me, like the culture behind the language, then it is. You all have went to school, you know, that one class that you go to that class, and you are like so happy. And it's like your home. And that's my class. Mandarin is that class for me, and I find it very sad that it is no longer being continued. And I really, I really want you to reconsider that. Because even like yesterday, I went, I went to school on Friday, and I saw that the new clocks were being installed, and I, I find it very just. I don't think that it's okay that you have money for new clocks, but not for education. I have spent two years, and I do not regret a single moment in that class. And I think that it is not okay that you spend it on new technology instead of on our education. I was not born in this country, and I know different education systems, and I'm very disappointed by this one. And I really do hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Liya Chow. Dear Board of Education members, my name is Liya Zhou. I founded the Mandarin program at Isaka City School District in twenty twenty one. Previously, I served as a producer and anchor as at a major TV station in China and led the Chinese Culture and Arts Association in New, in Niagara Falls. I appreciate your dedication to addressing key issues within ICSD. Our program has grown significantly, starting with fourteen students at Boynton and eleven at Duet Middle School. This year, thirty-four sixth graders choosing Mandarin, marking a remarkable thirty-six percent growth over two years, one of the fastest among New York State peer districts. Aligned with learning forward, SSD's interdisciplinary approach empowers our Mandarin students as a culture ambassadors, engaging them in state competition and AAPINH events that embody our value of inclusion and diversity. Their achievements such as showcasing East Asian martial arts and leading the school's inaugural dragon parade highlight their dedication. Recognized for our students' academic and cultural achievement, I had honor to presenting Chinese culture at the Council General of People's Republic of China and as a special guest at the United Nations Headquarters. This global recognition underscores the significance of our program with the international community, marking it a resource, a source of immersed pride for ICSD. The Mandarin program not only meet a steady demand at ICSD, but also serves as a cultural anchor for AAPINH and other minority students. Its impact on community is significant, demonstrating our commitment to inclusivity, diversity, and equity. SSD's year-round professional development for teachers, focusing on culturally responsive teaching and identity, upholds our core values and emphasizes global linguistic diversity. Removing the Mandarin program would deprive minority students of deserved visibility and support, impacting their sense of belonging and happiness. We respectfully urge reconsideration of the proposal to discontinue the Mandarin program for the upcoming school year and beyond. This program is a source of immersed pride and testament to our commitment to an inclusive and equitable education environment. Thank you. Another thing, I want to show you something from my students. This is a Chinese character, love, which is I. They love the culture. They want, we have more culture inside our ICSD. Thank you.
Ludi Augustine. Good evening. My name is Ludi Augustine. I'm actually here tonight as a parent. But as you know, I'm also a teacher here at Ithaca High School, so I am keenly aware of the really hard choices that are having to be made right now. I also am here to advocate that we keep the Mandarin program. I think it's embarrassing that in twenty twenty four we're going to go back to having French, Spanish, German. I like French, Spanish, and German probably fine, but I do think that it's important that we expand beyond European languages. We did start a program ten years ago, or tried to. It was not supported, and it was canceled. And it would be a shame to do that once more. This program is thriving, it's growing, the teachers are so dedicated, it's incredible. I understand there are lots of hard choices, but it feels like this is not the, the, the cut to be making. And there are really no good choices for students coming into the high school, that they will lose basically two years of language and have to start all over again. That is a shame, and I strongly advocate for keeping the Mandarin program, continuing to let it thrive and grow, because I do think it's representative of who we are as a district. Thank you very much.
Sarah Ferguson.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Ferguson, and I am the parent of a rising sophomore at Ithaca High School. My son started Latin in the ninth grade and has plans to continue taking it through the advanced placement level. He absolutely loves it, and it is his favorite class. So we were saddened and worried when we learned last week from the Latin teacher, not from the school district, that Latin instruction is being discontinued. I understand the reasoning behind the decision, and I regret that the first proposed school budget didn't pass, and that as a result, cuts that will affect all of our children have to be, have to be made. But to me, it doesn't make sense to cut the Latin program for several reasons. One, Latin costs the school district very little. The instructor, who is a longtime, highly experienced and superb teacher, works part-time and without benefits. Her salary is about the only expense of the Latin program. There are no labs, no field trips, no expensive online textbooks or programs as are required in some other classes. Latin is old school in the best sense of that term. It's teacher, students, old textbooks, dedication, and time. Two, Ithaca High School Latin students do extremely well. They score at, or most often well above, the national standard on the National Latin Test. Proud mom moment, my own son received a gold medal for his performance on the test this year in his first year of Latin. The students, of course, tend to be self-selecting, and they're usually students who are pursuing honors and other AP courses. And several students I've learned have gone on to study Latin and classics at excellent universities. Three, Latin, of course, provides an important foundation for the study of other languages, including Spanish, French, Italian, Portuguese, and other Romance languages, and it also provides a profound understanding of the English language. Latin is incredibly useful for students who are taking SATs and GREs, who go on to study law, medicine, politics, the natural sciences, and who go on to take civil service exams. Latin also gives students a deep experience of history and its importance, its importance to our current moment. And I think that we can all agree that in our current moment, an understanding of history is crucial to preserving our democracy. But in short, I believe that the Latin program at IHS provides tremendous benefit to its students and the wider community for a very low sticker price. So please keep the Latin program at Ithaca High School. Thank you.
Hannah Giottes and Angelopoulos.
Take your time, please.
I'm going to be very fast, because I didn't understand the, the procedure. That's why it's my, my name here. But I liked a lot the last you said, and it's very beautiful how you connected Latin with Chinese. I'd like to speak only for inclusivity. It's like to see the other face of the coin. Inclusivity is not only to, to find out what happened to the other, to, to, to welcome the other. It's also to understand a little bit, to enhance the possibilities to understand the others. And a language like Chinese, it's not only about the culture, it's the way that you, you have to think with a different way, and it's beautiful for the students to understand that it's there, there is no only one way to understand. That's why it's important, the language. That's why it's important, the maths also. But also, it's very interesting to understand that it's, there are different way to think about the things. Sorry for my English. I didn't have a program like this in my high school. Thank you very much, and sorry for your mind.
Kathleen Caesar. Kathleen Caesar. And this next one is supposed to be virtual. Una Kim. This also is supposed to be virtual. Alina Stellic.
That's the parent, and she gave me the email asking me to be up. Can I do that?
We, my apologies, the answer is no, but you could forward the email to all board members, and we will receive it, and I can assure you it will be read.
Sean Kennedy.
Good evening. I am Sean Kennedy. I came here as well to support the Latin program. Although I realized I also want to support the Mandarin program, because like everybody, I want the best for this school. I have two children, one who will be entering eleventh grade next year, and the one who will be arriving here as a ninth grader. My eldest just completed her second year of Latin. She took Latin because she had talked to other students and alumni who had taken it, and without fail, they all told her how great the experience was, and they told her not, not how, not only how much they enjoyed learning Latin, but they learned how to love learning and, and how much benefit they got out of it. She was devastated to learn that she might not be able to complete her third year of, of Latin. And as we all know, you do need three years of a language to earn the Advanced Regents diploma, and the loss of Latin puts her in a very difficult situation. I know that everybody here has the same goal, the goal of providing the best education for all of our children. And I know the budget constraints are real, and I know your job is not easy. But I want to remind you that decisions made for short-term reasons often have long-term negative effects. If Latin is cut, the stream of Latin students leaving the high school and extolling their experiences elsewhere about their experience at Ithaca High School will be lost. That's a long-term consequence. If Latin's cut and down the road for some good luck, it comes back. Who's going to take it if they think it's, could be pulled out from under them again? That's a long-term consequence. And my understanding with Mandarin that has been spoken tonight is that it's a, it's a new program at elementary schools. And there are many students eager to, to learn Mandarin, and now the rug is being pulled out from under them too. What's going to happen the next time a new program is offered? Who is going to sign up for it? Knowing that it could be cut, probably not as many who would sign up for it otherwise. And that's a long-term consequence. And then will this hypothetical new program be cut because not enough students signed up for it? That's a long-term consequence. We all know these programs add vitality and diversity to our students' educations. Losing them is a loss for the whole school, and I, I almost view it as, as like an extinction level event on our planet for a species. It's devastating, and they don't come back. My youngest is entering the high school. He has been taking German at Duet. And now I'm wondering, should he continue with German, or might that be cut? And now I'm wondering, should he continue with German or might that be cut? You know, that's another consequence we're dealing with. Cutting these programs solve a short-term budget problem and save money in the short run. But I think the long-term consequences for the school system far outweigh the short-term money saving. I know budgets are complex, I know your job is not easy. But please, find a way to save these programs.
Janine Kennedy? Janine Kennedy? Oh, okay.
Or anyone who had to go home, similar to the statement about reading something for someone else. Excuse me. Please send any comments to the board clerk. The board clerk will ensure that all board members receive any comments that people are not able to read this evening. I want to make sure everyone understands that. So please use that opportunity to make sure we hear from all constituents.
Karen Tribble?
Hi, my name is Karen Tribble. I am a parent of three children who graduated from Ithaca High School. Two had the good fortune to study Latin. And I am here to request that the school board strongly urge administrators to reconsider their decision to cut the program. Two of my children, one who graduated in 2015 and one who graduated in 2021, studied with one of the most intelligent, dedicated and passionate teachers at Ithaca High School. This teacher challenged and motivated them with rigorous curricula and instilled in them a love of learning and of language. The Latin curriculum is so much more than learning the grammar and vocabulary of a dead language. It is the gateway into new worlds that many students will never unfortunately have the joy of exploring. Latin is the poetry of the Aeneid. It is the history of the Roman Republic and its dramatic fall. It is the voice of the Catholic Church. Latin forms the core of the English language itself. Over half of our words come from Latin roots. Where else does one small program offer so much? Language, history, politics, philosophy, poetry and literature. The Latin, former Latin students have been emailing support and a graduate from 2018, Karina Burbank, asked if I could share her quote, "Cutting the Ithaca High School Latin curriculum would not only disrupt my many current students' learning, it would also take away something that makes our school district special." In these times of budget constraints, it might seem like a no-brainer to target an area that attracts as few students as the IHS Latin program. Instead, you might consider a different approach, push to increase enrollment in this program. I doubt you will find a better value for our tax dollars or a better advocate for quality education than the current instructor. This teacher and her Latin program are one of Ithaca High's hidden gems. Please consider preserving the wonderful Latin program at Ithaca High School. Thank you for your time.
Anna Westwick?
Hello, I'm Anna. I'm her daughter, I'm a graduate of IHS the year of 2021. Thank you for lending me your attention and your time. I know it's been a very long set of hours, more for you than for us, I imagine. You have heard several arguments in defense of Latin programs. Ones about the utility of Latin and its contribution to holistic academic success. Ones about the relevance and centrality of Latin programs to our modern society and the English language. Ones about how taking Latin cultivates the ability to deconstruct societal norms and prejudices. It encourages us to develop radical empathy and critical thinking. Although I find all these arguments valid and compelling, I trust you have heard them. Today, I am instead going to talk about the value of this Latin program, IHS's Latin program. The one that we have had for decades and the irreplaceable impact it has had on my life and on all students who have had the fortune to be taught by our Latin teacher. Taking Latin at IHS was the most meaningful experience I had in high school unequivocally. I was gifted with a thirst for knowledge. I exited class every day not just knowing more about Latin, but wanting to know more about the past, about the present. And it was after those classes, the first time I began to think with some excitement for my future. It was when I read a poem by Catullus that I realized the power of translation. How do you translate something from one language to another that lacks the first grammatical structures, its vocabulary, its very fundamental sense of rhythm? I memorized Catullus's poetry with the fanaticism of a teenager with a crush, and I mean that. It was when I read Virgil that I cried, touched so profoundly across 2,000 years by his account of a grieving man bereft of his homeland. I found solace and inspiration in Latin. These ancient writers grappled with the same emotions and questions I did from an alien framework. I realized that you could learn more about these things. The differences between languages, how to classify them, how they influence each other, how they influence our culture and our thoughts. Nothing had ever excited me that way before. Not only were we introduced to Virgil, Caesar, Marshall and Catullus, those writers which moved, challenged and comforted me, but the Latin curriculum was personalized to the other classes we were taking. Because I was in band, we would discuss Roman music. Because I was taking AP European History, we would discuss the role of Latin in the Enlightenment. Being in the Latin program made me not only a better Latin student, but a better student in all of my classes. When I got to college, I nervously entered the 300 level Latin class. I had no idea what was expected of me. After the first class, where we jumped straight into translating, the professor of Wellesley College, this prestigious liberal arts college, came up to me and asked me where I had been taught. He was taken aback when I informed him I came from a public high school in upstate New York. I say this to show you what might not be apparent if you aren't comparing our program to others in the country. Our Latin program is exceptional. It is highly exceptional and as my experience shows, unbelievable. Every single student in our program has access to an unwaveringly dedicated teacher who is committed to their success beyond the expectations of her professional role. I found in Latin things I could have found nowhere else. If the program had not been here when I was at IHS, not only would I have been deprived of a dream, I would not even have known my dream existed. Thank you for your time.
Wei Hong Li?
Good evening, my name is Wei Hong and I'll go by Jane. I have been living in Ithaca for 20 years and I have been working with ICSD for nine years. Today, I would like to speak as a parent and a community member. I have three sons. One, Ithaca High School, tenth grade, Andrew. And the two, Ithaca High School graduates. You know, I tried teaching them Mandarin when they were little. We even tried to look for private lesson, but all failed. It's just, it's just too hard to keep going, keep going without a system support. We tried, we pick up and drop, pick up and drop, pick up and drop. Then my kids said to me, Mom, don't worry. When we have this, I will choose Chinese class when I go to middle school, something like that. But it never happened. And now, like my college kids, when they come back, they try hard to communicate with my husband and with me, with my Mandarin-speaking friends and with relatives, they try hard to practice Mandarin. And they even download this Chinese translate apps. I see that and they, you know, I believe it's a different story if we had that continuously, had this Mandarin class offered in the past. It will be a different story, I will be telling a different life for them, different things for the kids. Yeah, we had the Mandarin program for three years, but I actually, when my kids grow bigger and Andrew missed the opportunity. And then I thought that we have this Mandarin program last year, only last year. And then I was so excited, I was so happy, I spread the news to the Chinese community and asked that support all the activities with, like in the middle school, I call for all the parents, students, like when they have activity. The most recent activity we did was the dragon dance. It's like a festival, teacher Joe and me were holding this sign and I just. That was very successful. Was very successful, even like later when I go to other place, people will come to me, oh, you did a great job. It's great news, people are so happy. But when like, I think it was a week ago and I heard from the teacher, the two teachers, they say the Chinese Mandarin program is cutting, is going to be cut. I couldn't believe it. And then we started this petition to ask this program back. And they asked my neighbors to send the petition, they were shocked, they were shocked.
A closing statement, please. A closing statement, your time is up, unfortunately.
Yeah, yes. I just say, my, our neighbor, neighbors, school district, like Binghamton, Rochester and like Geneva, Buffalo, they all have Mandarin classes. Why cannot we at ICSD? And why we are just suddenly quitting this program? I please ask you to take this consideration. Thank you so much.
Lanary His Julian?
Good evening. My name is Clay Heschlin. I am currently an eighth grader at Boynton Middle School and will be in ninth grade this fall at Ithaca High School. I have been studying Mandarin for the last two years. I was recently informed that Mandarin will not be offered at all for the school district next year. I take pride that I'm a Mandarin student and feel deeply saddened that I will not be able to continue that opportunity. Earlier this year, I was ecstatic that I had the opportunity to pursue a language that I love in high school. Mandarin has been one of my favorite subjects this year and I wouldn't want anyone else to be teaching me about language and culture. My teachers are some of the hardest-burkin people I know. They both have such warm personalities and they always work so hard to make Mandarin class as intriguing, as enjoyable as possible. In addition, one of my teachers teaches at Boynton as well as Duett. They organize so many opportunities for us as students. We participate in parades, get to try authentic Chinese food and experiences, all while taking in so much useful information. At the beginning of the school year, I was very stressed about Mandarin class. Finishing the year, I feel so much gratitude towards my teachers about how much they have taught me in such a compressed amount of time. I feel lied to about what I could expect going into a new school next year. There was a promise that I would be able to take Mandarin in high school, but that has been taken away from me. Rising seventh and eighth graders I talked to were elated that Mandarin was offered. And I can imagine they feel as sad as I do that they are unable to continue with that class. A big reason I think it is so important to have the Mandarin program is because it is one of the most spoken language in the United States and by extension, the rest of the world. I feel that it is so important to be able to communicate with others in my community and if I choose to travel to other parts of the world. In my last three years at Boynton, I've felt like there has been a big push for recognition of cultural diversity and action. IHS offers French, German and Spanish, all European languages. I feel that it is completely unfair that all those languages are offered and Mandarin is getting shut down after two years. At this point, going into high school has just become so much harder for me. I will need to start from scratch, learning a new language that others have had two years to work for. And I will be expected to be at that level with zero years of knowledge. This is so unfair. I beg you, please look at the budget again and if there is anything that can be done so I can continue the class I love. Thank you for your time.
Zua Orchid? Zua Orchid, I know I'm mispronouncing the first name, last name is Orchid.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a parent, I'm a parent of my son, which is eighth grade. He just took the two-year Chinese program. And then a week ago, I just got an email about the Chinese program was cut. So I was very upset because I know for the coming high school, he has to take another language from scratch. So because he's a Chinese descent half, because I'm from China. So I definitely want my son to continue to be able to learn Chinese Mandarin. As a parent, I really wish he can speak very well and also can embrace this diversity in this community. I really wish the community, the education board can consider Chinese program not to be cut. I didn't prepare to speak, but I just, I just come up just for whatever I think is so important for everyone. Everyone deserve a good education and the diversity in this community has been advocated for being culturally distinctive. So I do think that the Mandarin program should keep, just like Latin, other languages as well. The board of directors really need to reconsider this community's peace education more carefully. I just, I don't know what to say, but I really wish everyone be happy and this community can feel the need and communication with the different ethnic groups. So I wish everybody is happy in this community today. Thank you.
Before progressing by board policy, we have our public delegates scheduled for 30 minutes. The board could choose to extend that for any time that they agree. But it has to be done for by a motion and a vote. So I want to make sure we're keeping with our board policy. So board members, I'll entertain motions. Dr. Tripp?
I move that we continue the public comment hearing for another half an hour or until speakers are exhausted.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam, debate, conversation, questions. We'll call the question, all in favor? The vote is unanimous, thank you. I just want to make sure we're keeping with board policy. More?
Mike Fontaine?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Mike Fontaine. I want to first of all, thank you for your service. I know these are not easy conversations. I'm the father of two kids in ICSD, neither at the high school yet. I'm also a professor of Latin at Cornell and a former associate vice provost of undergrad education at Cornell. My point in telling you that is that I take this very seriously. I've studied this stuff for a long time and I'd like to make four points. Number one, Latin was the major language of both Europe and Africa for 600 years. I want to say that again because a lot of people don't know that. Latin is a major African language. Thirty percent or more of the literature from the classical period is written by African authors. It comes from Africa and that's what united Europe and Africa. So if diversity is really the priority that the school district says it is, it strikes me as totally counterproductive that we're going to get rid of this. Number two, unlike every other language we teach, there are no legacy speakers for Latin. It's a dead language. That means we are all, including me, equally bad at it. Nobody comes to class good at it because they speak it at home or mom and dad speaks it at home. So Latin is the great leveler. It means everybody's thrown in it together and learns this thing together. There are no headstarts with this one. Number three, Latin is basically just older Spanish. We have a lot of people in this community who speak Spanish at home, legacy speakers. They are interested in where their language came from. And this is the gateway to the past. Four, ICSD already has, as we have heard, a first-class Latin program and teacher in place. I know because I've observed it myself. I've also observed other places. That's huge. This isn't a program that we're trying to build from the ground up, which is what public schools are doing right now in Washington DC and Philadelphia. I've been to those places too and tried to help advise them on how to get it going. We're not trying to add opportunities here. We're simply trying to keep the amazing. We're not trying to add opportunities here. We're simply trying to keep the amazing opportunities we already have. And those opportunities improve learning and students and enrich students' lives. So in sum, I can't really believe we're having this discussion. Good schools teach Latin. They just do. So keeping Latin is a total layup. I would say just take the points and it's the right thing to do. Thank you for your time and attention.
Benjamin Ju? Benjamin Ju?
Recently, our district administrators made the heartbreaking decision to cut the Mandarin program citing budget cuts as the reason. It's difficult to comprehend why the district spends substantial amounts of money on other items. Does this imply that our dedication and learning hold less value than material possessions? The decision to cut Mandarin feels like a dismissal of our efforts and the commitment of our teachers. We students have worked hard for a very long time and it's disheartening to see our hard work disregarded in such a manner. Mandarin is a significant subject for many people, especially in terms of their identity. If the Ithaca City School District is trying to foster a culture of love, why completely disregard students and their learning opportunities? All the eighth graders and students will be forced to take Spanish one in high school, a class for failing students. Mandarin was also a wide comfortable space for students who identified as Asian. Many Asian students get discriminated against because of their race and Mandarin class was one of the comfortable areas for those students. Additionally, people who were not Asian and came from different backgrounds were learning Mandarin. Learning a different language and its culture is very beneficial, especially when it can develop a deep comprehension of someone's identity and culture. By eliminating Mandarin, the only options for students are either Spanish, French, or German. Students should learn Asian languages as well in school regardless of budget cuts. School is supposed to be a place to educate children, not a place to spend money on objects that mostly have no significant impact on students' education. What is the point of celebrating Asian month such as AAP INH month when our school completely overlooks the uniqueness of Mandarin, which is an English Asian language? This is very hypocritical and can affect many Asian students, making them believe that their culture and language is not as important as other languages. Have people forgotten the dragon dance, which is performed by the Mandarin class, allowing many students to join in on the fun, which sparked participation and entertainment? All of the students' hard work, the teachers' hard work, and the parents' hard work were all sacrificed just because of budget cuts, especially the parents. They paid a large amount of money for the school and their students' education of their choice of language, let alone their hardworking dedication is going to be immolated? This is outrageous. Most parents are struggling to pay taxes and are willing to give anything as long as your children are getting the knowledge they require. And yet the school fails to provide this. The teachers' hard work is sacrificed as well. The Mandarin teachers were the greatest people to work with. Their diligent commitment to teaching was apparent. Watching all of their years of hard work suddenly gone is gut wrenching. They want to make us students happy and well educated. Please consider saying no to eliminating Mandarin. This is very important for all of us, including students who aren't taking Mandarin class and are in sixth grade. Learning Mandarin is an opportunity to connect with teachers and absorb the beautiful language. It will also be of great significance in the future when new students arrive and possibly be the future of Mandarin becoming a popular language to take in the middle school, high school, and all the schools in the Ithaca City School District. Over 500 people have agreed to our cause and I hope everyone in this room does too. Thank you.
Hannah Bartosz?
Hi. Sorry, that was very loud. Um, hi, I'm Hannah Bartosz. I'm the ENL teacher at Boynton Middle School and I have an incoming sixth grade student, uh, that's going to be at Boynton next year and has been preparing for two years to take Mandarin and is, was very excited to, uh, have the opportunity to take 10 weeks of four different languages in sixth grade. And by cutting Mandarin, that is going to go away. And I'm not sure what the plan is to fill that space. Um, but we have a thriving program and we have so many people, as you can see, that are attesting to its success. And it sends the wrong message to our community, to our students, to the, the world. Um, when we cut languages, uh, it's really important, uh, with everything that we're doing in our district to try and be more inclusive, more welcoming, to then cut multiple languages, uh, seems like a failure. Uh, and I know that the first budget did not pass and that puts us in a really hard spot. Um, and I respect the really difficult decisions that are going to have to be made because that budget did not pass. Um, I just, I wish that languages were going to be an option, um, in, in that decision. Um, because it's, it's really, it's harming kids and it's, uh, it's not fair. Uh, when I told my child the other day that Mandarin was cut, she burst into tears and ran out of the room screaming, now I hate middle school. That was what I was looking forward to. And, uh, I hope that we can turn that around in the next 10 weeks and hopefully get, uh, some Mandarin being taught because, uh, it's, it's not okay. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Cynthia Stowe?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Cynthia Stoya. As the parent of a middle school student who is currently enrolled in Latin, a former teacher of English as a new language, and a current teacher of Spanish at IHS. I'm here this evening to request that the board reconsider the proposed cuts to the World Languages Department. First, I would like to advocate for our Latin program, which has existed under the leadership of the current Latin teacher since 2007. Graduates of our Latin program have gone on to study Latin in the classics at Ivy League universities in the US and at other prestigious universities abroad. Providing the opportunity to study Latin sets IHS apart from other local high schools, which can be a draw for families moving to the Ithaca area. Salud. Uh, on a final note, the savings to ICSD should Latin be cut would be minimal as the current Latin teacher is a part-time employee and does not receive health insurance through the district. Next, I would like to advocate for the Mandarin program. Not only has the addition of a non-Western language enriched our department, but it also has been a boon for many of our English language learners at DeWitt and Boynton. Having their home language taught has provided a sense of home and community for our students and allowed them to take on a leadership role, speaking their home language with their classmates who are learning and acquiring Mandarin. Languages open the doors for our students by exposing them to different ways of viewing the world and appreciating other types of music, literature, and art. I recognize that these are not decisions, easy decisions to make. But I ask that you please reconsider making these cuts and help keep these doors open for our current and future students. Thank you.
Hannah Stoy?
I'm Anna Stoya and I am a rising seventh grader. At my school, we have Latin classes twice a week, starting in fourth grade. We start having them more often and the classes get much more serious throughout middle school. But in ever grade, Latin is the favorite class of most of our students. Back when I was in fourth grade, I remember that my entire class had Latin in their top three favorite subjects and it would be amazing if we could continue to learn Latin at the high school instead of just having a few years of Latin and then stopping after we graduate eighth grade.
Valerie Evans?
Hi. I'm back. Um, okay. Good evening. I'm Valerie Evans. I'm a veteran teacher at Boynton Middle School for the next 18 hours. And then I'm out. I have three reasons I came this evening and I'll try not to say names. I first, the first and foremost, I wanted to thank Eldred Harris and Moira Lang for all your years of service.
Please, my, I apologize.
I can't say their names?
If you're going to drop the microphone, we can have a conversation.
The microphone got mad at me too. I would like to thank two members of the board that are leaving for all of your years of service and commitment to inclusion and anti-racism. I can't tell you how disappointed I am as a community member that the public has decided that these things are no longer important to them. I'm sorry for this and for the future of our community. And kids, I'm so proud of all of you for talking and some of you I've had as students. I'm really proud. Um, but I want to tell you, vote when you grow up and vote for budgets because that's why we're in this situation. I wish the same people that were here in early May that came and stormed the board meeting to blame ICSD for their assessments, I wish they were here to hear what they've done to children. I told them that night and I hope they're watching me on Zoom. I'll tell you now, it's your fault. And I am so mad. I wish that they, those folks that were here, were as outraged by some of the, um, okay, racists up on the hill who have now sued the district and provided a platform for hate to attack Dr. Brown. Oh, right, to attack our, to attack several of the people right here. Okay, number three. Please consider cutting programs that won't hurt children that need it the most. Avid. Oh, folks, no, no. So many of my children have gone on to college because of the avid. I'm, avid is more important than AP classes because it is one of the ways that we level the playing field. Please don't lose avid. And, um, I'm sorry. Mandarin, the Mandarin program at Boynton has created the most incredible affinity group for all of our Asian, um, American students and Pacific Islanders and more. You know, a lot of kids have become part of that program and been so excited. And if you were at the parade this year, you'll see how they are. We have never had that kind of affinity program. And I, I, it makes sense globally to teach a language that is not Eurocentric. Come on. Uh, we can't go backwards. And so that's all I wanted to say. And thank you all for your service, even if you're not leaving and won't mention anymore.
Margarita Zarat?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Margarita Zarate. I have lived in this community for 27 years, coming from South America. Um, I am very saddened right now to learn that the Avid program has been cutted for next school year. My son is a ninth grader and he has been classified as special education. He is like now moving up from that program, but he needs help. And the last, the last four years that we were confined and the school district was having classes online has some effects on, had some effects on him. So he's like kind of shy. With the Avid program, you will have the opportunity to move up. And many of the parents probably don't know, some of them have just learned what the Avid program is. And I just found out some information for you. It's a program that is an elective course to provide students with academic, social, and emotional support to help them succeed in, um, in the school. The program is aimed at students who have the desire to work for academic success, but might not have the skills to flourish academically. So, and they will benefit from this program. Considering these days that the New York State Department of Education has cited four schools from the Ithaca School District for poor academic performance. I think the Avid programs is a very important program to keep. So one of the parents said earlier, a quick fix now might have consequences in the future. And if we want the Ithaca City School District not to be performed as poor academic performance for our kids, please keep it. Try to help the kids that are not an A-plus students or a poor performing students. The kids in the middle need help too. Please don't cut it. Thank you.
Daniel LaBray?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Daniel LaBray and, uh, I'm the parent of a student who finished AP Latin this year. Uh, she's a rising senior. I've collected signatures from a bunch of community members in support of the Latin program. As of tonight, we are about 200 signatures down. And, um, I wanted to, you know, speak about two things regarding the Latin program. Um, I, we've heard from a lot of the community members, uh, in support of the Latin program for, um, its value from a cultural standpoint, a historical standpoint, uh, the legacy that it brings, the value of the teacher, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I thought I could talk about two other things. Number one, um, I would like to talk about capital budgeting, uh, and financial management. Uh, I happen to teach financial management up at the College of Business in Ithaca, uh, at Cornell. I've been doing that for 18 years. And, um, the way we look at things in the corporate world and the private world, when we're trying to decide what do we keep and what do we let go, uh, when you have a budget crisis, typically has to do with ranking. You rank budgets, you rank items and projects based on whatever values you're trying to achieve within this entity. Two typical concepts that people use are going to be risk and return. So let's just take a minute to look at the risk and return of the Latin program. Uh, return typically ties together the cost with the yield or the dividends in the long run. And I'm sorry if I'm speaking kind of a strange language here, but the cost of this Latin program is nothing. And the dividends going forward are incredible. Some people talked about, why would you make a bad, stupid decision in the short term with all the value that it generates in the long term and it's been generating for the community and for the district? I think this is something that is a no-brainer. There's literally no reason to cut and kill the classics and the Latin program under the lenses of the return that it generates to the community and to the high school and the district. The risk? What risk are we talking about? The teacher and the program have been literally delivering impeccable quality for all its students for the last 20 years. They all placed incredibly well in the Latin national exams. They all go and offer a bridge from the middle schools all the way to colleges. They're a staple, they're valued to the community. So that was the first point. The second point I wanted to talk about is the fact that Latin is a bridge to linguistics, which is a bridge to AI, to the future of language-based models. My daughter is interning this summer in computational linguistics at Cornell. She was only able to get there because of her Latin background. I urge you to consider not only the short-term cuts that you'd be making by getting rid of this. How do you save $6 million by eliminating a partial salary or part-time salary? Instead, look at the future and think about all the benefits that come with this program. Thank you.
Thank you for everyone who has spoken this evening. Um, that brings us to board responses. Board colleagues, any responses?
I'll start off tonight first. Thank you so much for coming, all of you, and waiting for us while we finish our other business. I'm a former Latin student. I took one year of Latin at Susquehanna Valley High School in nineteen sixty-nine, and you can see how successful I became as a result of that. So we'll be talking more about the very issues you brought before us tonight a little bit later. And we have heard you, and we will be talking more about why these decisions will be made, if you want to stick around for that. But I, we all appreciate your coming here, and we appreciate your emails, and thanks for sharing your thoughts.
So at the risk of repeating some things I might have said at curriculum committee, first, thank you for coming. On a personal note, especially to the young people here who are in the affected programs, a little note about myself, I took Japanese for four years in high school as part of a new program, very similar to the Mandarin program here. I was luckier, survived the budget, and I went on to study Japanese for four years in college and then live in Japan for four years. And I can just really empathize with you to, to have a program cut out from underneath you two years in. I can really understand that, and, and so it's terrible. Maybe you could talk a little bit about the process, and I mean, I'm gonna invite the leadership team to jump in if I've got it wrong. But as a district, we offered five languages, which is three or four more than most schools. And we're hit with a budget crisis. We funded these programs in the first budget, but the public didn't fund that budget. So now we ask leadership to sharpen the pencil and go back and trim out six million dollars. And I cannot, as much as I love these programs, I can't fault somebody for saying, hey, we have five languages. But students, an individual student can only take one of the five, in most cases, maybe two. But a student can't avail themselves of that variety. And so by limiting the number of languages, you limit choice, but you don't limit opportunity in the sense that they can still study a language. It's just they have fewer choices. And so I really can't fault leadership for seeking language as an area to find cuts, as unfortunate as it is. All right, we are not denying students the right to study a language, we're limiting their choice of, of language. But it's terrible, right? Within the languages, then, you start looking at the size of the program and the enrollment, and you realize where the easiest or most sensible places to start would be the programs with the lowest enrollment and the programs that are newest. And I think that's what, what we've done. And I can't fault that process, but I sure wish six million would, would come from the sky so we wouldn't have to do that. With respect to, you know, short-term versus long-term comments about that, you know, the budget, first budget failed in May. We had about three weeks to come up with the second budget. So we could, in the long term, talk about structural changes, the number of schools we have, those kinds of things. And I think we're gonna be talking about those things next year. The message from the public was the budget needs to be cut in the long run, and we're gonna have to look at long-term issues. But in the short term, between a failed first budget and the second budget, we need to come up with six million dollars in what, three weeks? And that means sometimes the short-term cuts are the only things that you have available. If you know the way, let me know afterwards. Right, I mean, you can't make certain decisions in three weeks. So you look at what you can change in three weeks, all right? That's not to make this any less unfortunate, but that's, that's the process that we followed. And, you know, I invite your leadership to correct me if, if I'm misunderstanding how they've gone about it. Let me say something about the communication. I understand that there was a situation where some students or other groups heard before the faculty heard. Okay, that's a failure. That shouldn't have happened, and I just apologize, it shouldn't have happened. Let me be clear that our policy should always be that we talk with faculty before sending out a decision to the public and try to work with the faculty to make the decisions as less pain, as least painful as possible. And I think that's what we should do moving forward. Some better news. I have heard people talk about Spanish one as being the only option for those in the Mandarin program. I think we can offer more options than that. Again, I invite others to jump in and correct me, but we have a language program at IHS that offers French, German, and Spanish. We offer all three of those programs, all the way to the end, to the advanced placement class. And a rising ninth grader has the option to opt into French, German, or Spanish two R. I said Spanish two. Spanish, French, or German two R. Okay, I've spoken with the world language faculty. It has happened in the past, and it can continue to happen, that, that very diligent students, as I'm sure there are many in the Chinese program, who are willing to put in extra work, do extra assignments and work with their teachers who have expressed their willingness this morning to do that. Basically, French, German, and Spanish are willing to take students at level two R so that they can complete a program all the way to the advanced placement. And I know that's important for a lot of students, because the AP credit, in many cases, is a waiver to a language requirement in college. So the, the language teachers have done that in the past. There have been positive results of that in the past, and they're willing to do that this year. Last thing I'll say is, you know, as we look at the budget moving on, I would just, I'm always speaking for myself, and I'm not speaking for the board. But the board sets education policy, and I think the correct policy is that, given the choice between offering more languages in less depth or fewer languages in more depth, I think fewer languages and more depth, meaning allowing students to go all the way through to the end to the AP, is the preferable policy. I wish we didn't have to make that choice, but that's just my, one member of the board, my policy preference is fewer languages, more depth, and the ability to pursue those languages.
Other board member responses?
Well, Tom, thank, thank everyone again for coming out and staying so late with us. And as, as a admin team, a board and the admin team, it wasn't only Mandarin, Latin, and Avid that was first looked at. But yet we heard from the community as a result of the no vote in May. And twenty-two percent of administration, the executive team, was cut. So it's very hard when we went from, had a reduction of six million dollars. So, and it's affected across the whole board in some fashion and all. But knowing that we, as a community, will have to look at things differently going forward. And I appreciate that there was a student here that started Latin from fourth grade. And that's something in the future, we could look at how many elementary students that we can start, any language in the future with elementary age, because normally it starts in middle school. And to the person that talked about on the formation or foundation of Latin, my dad spoke Latin. And in our household, we grew up, I didn't speak it, but I spoke, I took Spanish in middle school at that time. But my dad enforced and more or less recommended it, as the importance, my sibling and I, of taking a language and spoke to us about the beauty about Latin and all. So I definitely understand that and appreciate that. I wasn't keen to hear from someone that said Spanish one in high school is a class for failing students. That's not what we're about in this community. So please don't kind of attack each other in a negative way, because it was like, you know, that example of a, your nails going across a chalkboard. And if you're looking at another group that's taking Spanish one and making that negative comment, I didn't really appreciate hearing that comment. So I'd like to reverse the language where that's concerned. And as we continue to work going forward and just looking at things from a different perspective for the next school year, just bear with us, because we had to adjust and we support our admin team in this adjustment. And to end my comment on a positive note, I'd like to congratulate the Ferguson family for their son's gold medal achievement. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Just make a few quick comments. Yeah, also, I just want to echo what everybody said, thank you very much for coming. It's really good to hear from people in the community. And also, you know, everything that was said was very, very elegant and, and compelling. And I think probably on, on a personal note, probably there's very, very few people at the table want to see any, any languages in our district getting cut. And, you know, and it's very unfortunate and sad that, that, if that would happen. I think, I think it's important, maybe, and it could either be, you know, sometime this evening, hopefully, or in the near future, maybe, to hear a little bit more just about, about the process of how some of the difficult decisions are getting made as, as to what things are getting cut. Just, I just heard some fragments in, in the conversation, like objects are being valued more than classes or something like that. And I don't, I don't think that that's true. I think, you know, obviously, all the things that are, that have to be cut are being, are being considered carefully. But I think it would be helpful to just hear more about the process of how that's happening and why we're in a situation where, you know, really important things like foreign languages are, are on the table as, as possible things to be cut. So I just, I would like to hear a little more about that.
Well, I don't want to prolong this already long meeting, but I want to thank everybody for coming. Thank my fellow board members for their remarks. And I would echo what Adam was just saying, that I think everybody on the board recognizes that the programs that were spoken about tonight have value. But, and I've taken a lot of notes, I have some questions to ask about more of the nuts and bolts, which the board is not involved in these granular decisions, but we want to be informed. So your comments have raised questions for me, so that I can fully understand where we are and how we got here. Thank you.
And I'll just be really quick. It's hitting home for me, too. I have two children who came from Mandarin immersion schools before we were in this district. So we were extremely excited about the Mandarin program. And so I appreciate your comments. Like Moira said, this has raised some questions for me, just to learn more about the process, about what considerations, what factors are evaluated as we're deciding what cuts we must make. And like you said, and like Karen said, we appreciate you bearing with us, as these are hard budget decisions to make.
So this is, this is, I almost feel like I've come full circle in a very strange way. I mentioned during the budget process that my first meeting as a board member in two thousand nine was in the old York Hall. And we had maybe twice as many people that are sitting there now who were coming to the mic, because they feared that the district was going to diminish our arts and music programming and our theater program. Rumors had gotten out just like this, ahead of the game. And it was intense, but I didn't know anything. So I sat there, I said, wow, this is, this is going to be interesting. And our principal at the time decided to throw a bomb into the center room, saying, well, we could fall, we could close Fall Creek, one of our beloved walk-to-school, community, elementary schools. So that was my induction by fire. As a board member, I understood clearly, given my talents and my experience and my education, that I decided to put into this universe, that it was our job to figure this out. So we didn't cut those programs. In fact, they're now at a point where every child in elementary school has access to an instrument if they so desire. We didn't close Fall Creek. We enhanced the programming. What we did is figure out the budget, figure out how to do better with our money. We figured out how to do things like get rid of paper. The Pony Express is dead now, now we have a digital system for the most part. We looked under every stone, managed to engage in every partnership possible with the state, with other folks, to do the things that still needed to be done. We still needed to fix the boilers. We still needed to have buses that weren't falling apart. So we did them. I asked the community at that time, and what I'm asking the community to hold my board members for going forward, as this is my last meeting, to one standard and one standard only. Make this a true public school system. One that doesn't only appreciate one set of children. One that doesn't prioritize one set of children. They're no zero-sum games yet. We can't decide as a community whether or not to support AP kids or the kids who want to do down-slope skiing, I think it's called, or the kids who we need to push through Avid, so they can understand that TC three is an option. Right, those are not fair choices for children. We may not be able to invest as much as we want into each program, but our job collectively as adults, helping our administrators make decisions, prioritizing decisions, is to let them know clearly they don't get to play zero-sum games either. We are responsible for roughly five thousand kids here. And if the kids at the top don't excel, it's no difference between those kids not realizing their dreams and some of our babies winding up on the police block being somewhat unuseful to their community and somewhat unuseful to their family. I have enjoyed my opportunity to see what it took to invest the talents we have, time, treasure, and talent into making a true public school district. It's been a phenomenal experience, and I've learned a great deal. Recently, this community decided that there is a limit to the cost of balancing equity and excellence. Now it feels like we're beginning this cycle again, where we're going to start having these zero-sum conversations. I encourage all of us to please avoid that. Public school is never going to go up consistently the way I think it should, right? With investments at all municipal levels, local, federal, state, et cetera. We've experienced a global financial collapse. We've experienced a global pandemic. We've experienced a crisis with lead in the water. We've experienced a state coming and taking our carefully positioned savings accounts on one occasion. Lots of things happen on this side of the table that you don't all get to see. I will end by saying it's so beautiful to hear from the people with your passion and your knowledge and your experience and your articulate presentations about this one thing. I would encourage you to not make this the last time you come and speak about just your self-interest. Find out what's happening in the school district, and please come advocate for other children about other things. Or else it's gonna, again, it's gonna feel like the only thing you're concerned about is what you care about and not all children. The young lady spoke so passionately about objects. Again, we've tried to make this clear, I'll say it again. Under Dr. Brown's leadership, we spent millions of dollars, literally millions of dollars, reorienting, reorienting the front entrance to all of our elementary schools in particular, so that they would be safe from the things that we don't know, need to go into detail about. The clocks were always part of our agenda, because our first responders mandated it. They need precision information. Half of our analog clocks don't work. The ones that do work are way off time. They said, look, you want to do this right, and you want us to respond, get your act together. So now we're, we've gotten to the high school, and you can see the digital clocks. But that was not because we desired to spend half a million dollars, because we had nothing better to do. And most of the decisions made, again, on this side of the table, have implications like that. I would just ask people to take the time to educate yourselves about the questions you have. take the time to educate yourselves about the questions you have. There's no one here who won't respond to a call. There's no one here who won't share information with you. Again, I thank everyone for putting up with me for as long as I've served on the board. And I'll just end with this because this is where I started. So I have a beautiful 12 year old niece and five year old nephew. And they had the pleasure of hanging out with Dr. Brown and most kids who hang with Dr. Brown, uh, uh, wind up leaving very impressed. When I told them we were having some difficulties and he was feeling a little sad, they sent these two precious items with me and said, please let Dr. Brown know that we are thinking about him. This has always been about kids. Adults, families, teachers, we play this game all the time. We know that, you know, we know our role. But at the end of the day, we're here to protect in many cases, people who start out not coming out to this table. And then we turn around, we have to look up or get on, get on a step stool to, to look them in the eye. Remember that as this group goes forward, give them your support. Request that they don't play zero sum games. Request that this remains to the extent possible, a public school for all children. Thank you.
Cade Mom. Speaking of kids, I think Cade Moms is wanting to.
We're going to give you a moment because you are our student rep and it's our only student rep. It's on the agenda. So you will have your time. So give it a second. Um, I don't want to repeat what other folks have said. I do know that the worst part about volunteering for a board are being in this very position that we find ourselves in. The difficulty of a failed first budget creates significant tension uh, to the young people who spoke this evening. I'm glad school is out because it's nine fifty-four. Um, but do know, uh, without question, I would dare, I, I will take the risk of speaking for my fellow colleagues. It is your voice that we hear the most. It is how you say it to us that we pay attention to and rings true for us about why we serve. So first, thank you. Uh, I know it's not easy to come speak in any situation, but particular in this situation, and it continues to inspire me, uh, to think about again, the work that we do. I guess what I'll end with, and we have a long agenda still to get to, including student rep. I want to echo what my colleague said that I want us to avoid to be in a position of pitting programs against each other. Uh, I've been down that path as a school board member where we're talking about, do we fund this program or that program? And do we say, does an after school program deserve more than a late bus program? Does a late bus program deserve more than an amazing Mandarin or Latin program? Does that deserve more than a co-curricular activity? I don't know where we're going to be headed. But I can tell you, part of this begins with a budget being voted down. And we began that budget process, which many folks probably were not paying the most attention to when it started by our administrators asking the board, is this what you want us to fund? And the board said, yes. And that was the number that was put forward. And here we find ourselves through a host of reasons, trying to make much more difficult decisions of which was not about a particular program. And I greatly appreciate the cost benefit analysis. I'm looking for the economics faculty member, right? The cost benefit analysis, but rather saying that can also be difficult by saying we're going to hold to a class size of seventeen. In some regards, that is equitable and in some regards, it's not equitable. And we have these difficult decisions to make. It'll be a long summer. Give us some time to work some things out. It is not going to make everybody happy. How can it when you're cutting a budget of $6 million? That's the reality of it. Uh, but do know, and I think as I wrote, I'll say, I wrote to my board members this morning, some of our decisions will not be educationally sound. I can't believe I'm saying that in public as an educator. Some of our decisions will not be educationally sound. They will be forced by the funds that we have to be able to negotiate. With that being said, call. You can buy me lunch. Right? Or I'll buy you coffee. Let's have a conversation. Let's talk. Let's try to be solution based. The one thing and the reason why, as a thirty-two year resident of this community, one thing I know is that we have significant power to be solution based and innovative. And let's do that together as the only way in which we're going to find the solutions to where we find ourselves. So again, to the students, thank you for speaking. To the teachers, thank you for your continued service and patience and the way in which you spoke with us this evening. I appreciate that and we know that we have work to do and we're committed to doing that work. So thank you very much. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is student rep. We have a typo here, not reps.
Hi, everybody. My name is Caidman Seethapati. I'm a student representative to the Board of Education and I've had the honor and privilege of serving in that position for the last year. I'm not going to give a rundown on school events because school is over. So I want to comment on this really quickly. I don't want to take more than a couple of minutes of the board and the public's time. I understand that this is a long agenda and we're already quite late into the night. Couple of things. So first, I really appreciate the students coming out and speaking today, a public comment. And I get that the decisions that are being made by the Board of Education right now are intensely difficult. And as Dr. Bradwell said, not necessarily always educationally sound. Sometimes decisions are forced upon us. However, I would like to point out a couple of things. So being the only high schooler to have spoken tonight, I'll say something about what happens after you leave middle school and reach high school, maybe in a little more depth. So when we switched to a seven period schedule, it became much more difficult for a lot of students to fit classes into their schedules. This is even, this is true even more for language classes because, uh, oh, you don't need to take them all the way to the end to graduate. And as a result, it often falls on people's backburners of priorities, not because they don't care about languages, but because these are the things forced on us, not even by the Board of Education, but by the state, right? However, I think it's important to recognize a couple of things. So when we come into high school, our schedules are already jam packed. We're finding difficulty putting new classes in because of the switch to seven period schedule, which is a whole nother topic. And now we're trying to fit a language class into here, right? And for a lot of students, a language class is about more than just getting what's required for graduation. If it were just about getting what's required for graduation, everyone would stop after one or three credits and we'd just be over. But language is about a lot more than that. Language is about the wonder of learning, of experiencing new culture. People have already touched on this. But it's also a very practical consideration. And as a student who's about to start writing college apps, I, I have to be honest, language is important. It's just practically important whether you like it or not. If you want to go to whatever college you want to go to, you should probably take it. And I know that that's understood. So the, the issue that you run into here is you have students who have been taking Mandarin, for instance, for two years at the middle school level. Now normally this vaults you to a higher level class in high school. Now I understand that there have been instances where especially diligent and hardworking students have been able to through, uh, extra time spent with their teachers, move towards, uh, Regents, uh, Level Two or Honors even Level Two. However, I would like to mention that those are exceptions, not the rule. And in those exceptions, I'm not sure we can say it's a district, uh, supporting equity in that case because that takes extra resources, that takes time spent outside of school to work on learning a language. On top of that, uh, i- it's also important to think about the fact that this decision comes pretty late in the school year. My sister moved to Honors, uh, two H skipped, uh, the earlier levels. And she did that through a lot of diligent, hard work with people in the, sorry, skipped to three H, but through a lot of diligent, hard work with the teacher throughout the school year. The school year is ended now. So we're in a tough position where kids are over the summer going to have to figure out how they're going to vault themselves to two H or two R. The downstream consequence of that is that very likely a vastly lower percentage of students will be able to take a language at the higher level that they want later in high school. Now that they have to fill that lang- and even for students who don't want to take language at a very high level later in high school, now they have to start at a lower level and build credits back up to appear appealing to colleges. And in, in doing that, they're cut off from other course offerings because of the seven period schedule. And so they can't take the engineering track that we have. They can't take the vast array of fine arts credits we have. And then we have the Latin program, which, uh, I, I am very cognizant of the time. So this will only be 30 seconds, but the Latin program, you know, we have, there's a low cost to this. I'm not saying I don't know where the cost can come up, but we're not looking at a ton of money. And I've personally been friends and known many students who have benefited enormously from having Latin in their high school curriculum. All this to say that I get that these decisions are hard ones to make and I'm not running the numbers on it. But from a student perspective at a high school level, things don't only have downstream consequences in terms of a, the Ithaca High School as a whole, but on students particularly and on students' lives. And when we're playing with students' lives, to me, it feels a lot like playing with fire and playing with fire usually gets you burnt.
Board responses. Any board responses?
And it's, it's unfortunate, but it's, it's been a challenge for, um, students, even when there was the eighth period and students felt pressured that they had to take zero period. And it's over the years, there's always a challenge. And I know that our administrative staff at the high school, as well as with the exec team are always working and trying to juggle. We had LACS students say, well, can we participate in the driver's ed and all that? And unfortunately, even if we look at the, in the accountability metrics, we've seen a decline of advanced world language courses, participation and enrollment since 2014. The trajectory has been going down, unfortunately. So, um, as we continue to just investigate further and have the administrative team look into it, we're taking all of those things into consideration. And that's on our website, the accountability metrics, if anyone wants to see that.
Any other board responses?
I just, uh, the seven versus eight periods is something we have to look at. Uh, I think it's a policy issue because it really limits academic diversity and I like to look at it, uh, in the fall.
And I'll just say without question that should happen. But I want folks to know that that was not a year or a six months decision. That there was a committee that spent multiple years to make that happen and not everyone agrees with it. I understand that, but please know that the board did, not just the board, the board, I understand, my apologies, right? But we'll, we'll get at the, the school community folks, that part we'll get into. Um, the only thing I'll say is, uh, you're talking to a group of folks that believe in the role of, uh, being, for lack of a better word, being worldly. Of course, I tell people at the time, I am multilingual. I speak my native tongue of African American vernacular, English or Ebonics. And I speak another language that some people call job interview. Right? And so I say that as to say that I understand the importance, not just of code switching, but of language. And I think everyone here at the table understands that. And we find ourselves in a situation where no one wants to be at. And so it is going to be difficult moving forward. The community should hear that and I don't want to be the person saying it, but I will be this evening. It will be difficult as we move forward as there are less and less options. That is the unfortunate reality of where we find ourselves. How we engage that, how we problem solve, how we make that happen, those are questions that we can collaborate on without question. But let's not lie to ourselves as if the school district that we had last year will be the school district that we have next year. It will be different. It will be different. And I look forward to working with folks to find innovative solutions. It is closing in on 10 o'clock. I'm going to keep our agenda moving forward unless there are other responses. That will bring us to the consent agenda and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve all consent agenda items that are still in the consent agenda. Uh, listed in consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Jill. Discussion, debate, conversation. Uh, I will note that it is an extensive consent agenda. It includes a number of, uh, resolutions for the appropriation of funds. It includes a couple of memorandums of understanding, uh, or memorands of agreements with, uh, unions, uh, as well as a personnel report, which has some key, um, both hires, um, retirements and resignations that are difficult for many of us who have been in the district for a number of years to see folks rightfully so earn their flowers, but also know that it's going to change the tenor of a number of buildings. So it is an extensive consent agenda. Additional questions, comments, debate? Hearing none. We will call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous from the board members here. Thank you very much. That brings us to the superintendent report, Dr. Brown.
Professor Bradwell, thank you for the opportunity and the time. Uh, briefly and first and importantly, I wish to respond to some of the public comments. Um, as a supporter of the world languages, as one who, um, has been here long enough to now and say, I was here when we tried Mandarin twice. Been the one advocating for it, including it in our budget. Um, I'm looking at educators that I've been a part of personally recruiting to be here. Um, it pains me to have to make this shift. But I also heard the questions about process and how we got here. And I just want to remind folks and direct folks to the budget priorities document that's on our website. That's been presented to the board on several occasions since the first budget went down. Um, and I want folks to hear me when I say there is no, um, magic or anything that's not transparent right now about the process. The process is very clear and it's in that budget priorities document. And in there, it includes, um, any class sizes less than seventeen, we will not run. And there was a request from the board in several meetings to us to hold tight. And a request we talked about here and we said we will honor in response to the board adopted budget and the community feedback. I have no more as far as a process we've gone through. And, um, I just want to say that on behalf of the building principals and myself and my team who are looking at people we love and programs that we support. And that we came here to be a part of developing and cultivating and say, yeah, they're difficult decisions. Um, and I want to be absolutely clear about how we're making them. And I am working at the direction of our board and community using the parameters that we've been given. So if there are questions about process beyond that, please, um, bring them my way and I probably will respond in a similar way and I will direct you to the document on the website. And I also agree that it's not always the best thinking, but it is the thinking at this point. And then I'll transition, uh, to some things more celebratory if I can. Um, and first and importantly, uh, Moira and Eldred, um, personally and professionally, I have so much I want to say to you, but I'll say that offline because I love you. And I will say to community members who are here at the late hours of the night, you're a committed community servant and these two are the best I've ever seen. I aspire to and I have my kids watch them and my kids have been watching Eldred Harris since October of 2010, when they walked, one of them who was born at the time at six months old, walked into his store. And I said, that is a community servant. And when Moira Lang decided after retiring, after 40 plus years of doing this work, well, maybe not 40, but I'm sorry, Moira, but a long time, decided she was going to come to board meetings and and commit and watching the students who you have had, you've served over decades coming here. One, reveal you and at times challenge you in the ways in which you respond with grace. I love you. I want the young people in the room and my own kids to see what community service look like in the ways in which you respond. I appreciate you and I love you. And I will say much more offline. And, you know, you know, we appointed, uh, you know, the last meeting I had an opportunity to talk about, I hope he watches it, a gentleman named Dan McGrath, who we gave tenure to as an associate principal. And thanks to the Board of Education, very quickly, he, um, has been promoted to be principal of the grit middle school. And I think he's here tonight. So Dan, congratulations. has been promoted to be principal of the grit middle school and I think he's here tonight, so Dan, congratulations. An amazing, an amazing educator um that we're all very fortunate to have an opportunity to work with and uh appreciate you. And I'm not gonna say much more, you just watched the video from last time. And then I'll leave with this, um, you know, if you were at graduation today, one, you were hot like I was. Um, but if you sat there and you really paid attention to what was happening, you know, I gotta folks know I'm, I'm heading towards uh my ninth surgery on my right foot, so I'm not allowed to stand up too much. But I was there and I, I had a chance to watch for the first time without a robe on and I watched hundreds of young people hug Lily Talcott. And they remember her from teaching them when they were five, they remember what she would say to them when she walked into a hallway, when she saw them in the cafeteria, they love you. And it was joyful for me to see that as a young person who went through our schools and who came here to be a teacher when she could have been anywhere in the country, including New York City. And then she aspired to be, cause I'm asking her, she said no the first time. To leave this place that you are so good at, principal of Northeast and come into spending hours every Tuesday night being yelled at and told you're incompetent sometimes? And she said, yes, I'll serve, sign me up. And she's been, and I've been saying it for years now, the second she's appointed as a superintendent, she will immediately become the best superintendent in our state. And I said that at the Niskus Conference in front of seven hundred of my colleagues and I've said it to everybody who's asked. And I could go on and on about the talented educator we have now leading in our estate and she is one of the top educators in our state and will be recognized in that way and have that positional power and authority here in the next couple of weeks. But what I wanna say tonight, and I want everybody to hear it, she's one of the best educators in the country, but she's also the best mama I've seen. She's also uh she married the love of her life and she's the best spouse I've seen. I've seen her with her mother who was a long-term educator here and she is the best child of a former ICSD educator I've seen. And I'm here to tell you, uh, you're one of my best friends. And I would say I love you, but there's already so many rumors about us anyways, I won't say that. But uh, you know how I feel about you and I'll say a lot to you offline too, but um, I want folks to know this is her last board meeting here. You will hear a lot more and see a lot more of Lily Talcott. And as we all, I'm retired, we're all retired, we're gonna see her leading this work nationally and internationally. And I want everybody to know, she's a product of an Ithaca City School District education. And that is something we should all be proud of and she we should celebrate. Congratulations Lily, we gonna miss you. Thank Professor for the opportunity.
This work is always bittersweet when you watch folks continue to thrive and grow and um getting a phone call from Ms. Talcott saying that they would be taking another position. Uh, my, I think my first response was, yeah, I, I, I knew that was coming. Um, then second, no one is much more deserving uh than you. My only saving grace is that you'll be within the community and there'll be some opportunity for collaboration. But uh, I've rarely seen someone um with as much love, uh compassion, grace, dedication. And uh, a dedication to the work. Not everyone does that under fire. And so I'm wishing you significant success in your next role and know that there are people here to support you in that role as much as possible. This is a loss for us and a gain for the larger community. So thank you Lily again, appreciate that. And before I'm gonna take liberty, my apologies, we are losing twenty-five years of board experience. Eldred Harris has served for fifteen years, Moira has served for nine years. That kind of experience does not come lightly through the ups and downs of being a school board member through different budget seasons, different cycles, uh you name it. We have had our shares of disagreement, which is a true sign of friendship and collaboration that we can tell each other when we're wrong, uh and we can also bolster each other when we're right. And so to Eldred and Moira, I will echo Dr. Brown's sentiments. Thank you, thank you for the willingness to serve. As Eldred says, thank you for your willingness to serve for a free chicken sandwich. You will be missed and you're greatly and sometimes a chocolate chip cookie, you're greatly appreciated. Uh, we will try to get through this agenda as best as we can.
Oh, can I make one comment before we continue? A short comment, you knew this was coming.
And I don't think I have the power to stop you even as board president, so I don't know what to say.
Barbara, before you leave. Okay, my comment is directed to her and her charges, so we'll wait for her to come back.
Fantastic. Um, that will bring us to the next agenda item, we'll come back to Mr. Harris to speak, that's agenda item eleven point one. My apologies, Ms. B.
There she is, let me get this out of the way. So I want to thank you because you often don't get a shout out from this side of the table for bringing these lovelies to us over the years. Uh, from Conner Couts, who I still stay in contact with on a regular basis. I just ran into one of your other charges who I help usher through one of their law school, as I have several other kids who took my path. Pierre Saint, I cannot remember his last, the last part, but it's a hyphenated name. The relationships we built with these kids are lifelong. So I appreciate you and what you've done and making us, putting us before the state's mandate to do this. To have young people with us at the table and I just wanted to express my gratitude to you.
Uh, and to repeat, uh, agenda item eleven point one, the Climate Action Plan Resolution. We had a group of ICSD uh dedicated educators come to us last week and propose that the board adopt a Climate Action Plan Resolution. Uh, we said that we would put it on the next agenda and here we are and so um feel free, we'll entertain motion.
We've got a Climate Action Plan Resolution here. And I'll read the proposed language from the ICSD Sustainability Advocates, which is whereas the climate crisis is a social justice and equity issue primarily caused by human behavior, the Ithaca City School District therefore commits to taking accelerated action to reduce district greenhouse gas emissions, incorporate sustainability measures and support climate education throughout the school community.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Karen. Discussion, conversation, questions, dialogue?
Say a little bit, I um spoke with Armin about this at some length yesterday and um he wanted me to know and he wanted you all to know that they see this as the first part of a process. This is basically saying that, that we agree that um sustainability in our district is an important thing and that we'll be moving toward these solutions or attempts to ameliorate some of the worst effects of climate change in our district. And that, as I said, this is just the beginning, there, there's, they have an action plan that they're developing with some specifics to come that will be coming before the board in the future. Um, as they move into next year with more people involved, more students involved, more community members involved. So this is basically saying we support that effort and we want them to continue.
And we need you and I've talked with Armin and I appreciate his leadership ones uh so much, but at the risk of asking you to do even more, you need to hold this board uh accountable for knowing what the act, action steps are and how to move on.
I will only add that we also need to hold our community responsible for the efforts that are put forward to try to align our mission and budget and goals with what's stated here into um both uh Armin and Cindy, um uh thank you for your work with our students as well. Their um statements to us, as I said earlier, students really grab our ear. And so their uh presentation over the number of years, I, I will never forget the GOAT team, I love the GOAT team. Uh, but um continue to have them come hold us accountable as well, so, so thank you for that. Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll ask the question, all in favor? That is everyone who is present minus Mr. Harris. Thank you very much, the motion passes and we will follow up and there'll be work to be done, so thank you for that effort to make that happen. Uh, that brings us to agenda item eleven point two, there are two um policy agenda items that are taking place. If it is okay with the board, I actually would like to take a three-minute break if that is doable. So can we take a, a few minute break, board, and come back? So it'll take three minutes and we'll come back, everybody. Let's, I'll just let it sit for a second. Uh, thank you for letting us have the break, we will continue um with our agenda, which brings us to agenda item eleven point two, uh the LACS enrollment policy. And uh, I will yield to my colleague, Moira Lang.
Well, uh, this is on for a second reading and adoption. Uh, it um was worked on by Lily Talcott and uh some other folks at LACS. They to the policy committee, uh, you know, we asked questions for an annual bandit. Um, and then uh, and then it went to the LACS site-based council who also had some ideas and then that led to discussion at LACS for a few changes to uh the, a couple of changes to the substance of the policy, but not too much. Um, and so it really is uh just putting into policy codifying what has been a process that's been in place for years. Uh, so questions? I'm not sure I can answer, I'm not sure, you know, Lucy or who can answer that.
Right, there should there should, a motion uh would be entertaining.
A motion, yes, would be good.
I will read the motion. Uh, motion to approve this, the, oops, I almost read the wrong one. We could say motion to approve the policy regarding the LACS enrollment policy as presented.
Well, I'll read it correctly, motion to accept policy five one one one, leaning on alternative community school enrollment and admissions for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Adam. Questions, conversation, discussion, debate?
Well, discussion point, so it was um further discuss at um LACS site council where there were some corrections that they had requested like application pool, applicant pool from waitlist, it was stated waitlist to applicant pool as well as the um period for reviewing things instead of three business days, two weeks.
Right, right, yes.
So some of those curri- most of those corrections were made, but I see in the first paragraph, it says LACS, the N, LACS maintains a waitlist. And they had some questions.
Yeah, else for
waitlist everywhere else it changed to application pool or applicant pool.
Hmm. I don't know whether that also should be.
I think a simple solution would be to table it until we get clarity on all the language. I remember being part of some of those conversations and wanting the language to be um exact. It's not gonna change, we've already engaged in the admission process for this year. Of course, we know there was some changes over the summer, but it's not gonna change anything that we do for this upcoming school year. So it would not be detrimental if we were to table it to make sure the language was clear and moved from there, so. I'm gonna look, I know I'm gonna do Robert's rules wrong if we table it, it should require a vote, but.
And if we're tabling it, we're um also going to engage in site council for them to review the
Recommended changes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but it would only be that one as far as I heard. Cause they've already gone through this, the site-based council.
Oh, they, oh, yeah. Repeat the update.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the, what's in front of us was updated by the site-based
Members of the site-based council.
And then I checked with Ms. Talcott and uh with the principal when I saw what the changes were to make sure that everybody was aware of what they were. And it, and it seems like perhaps just they miss changing waitlist to applicant pool in one place.
Or, cause this wasn't in the first document that they reviewed, so unless, if they've reviewed it, it seems like they've probably made whatever necessary correction and put this section in because that wasn't in
Yes.
the original.
Yes.
I, I would feel much more comfortable if we were voting on the um finalized version. For me, the last version I saw was edited, included changes, but it wasn't a sort of quote unquote clean version of the policy. Um, I would feel better, again, since it's not gonna have an impact on this upcoming year, I would feel better if we were to table it and to make sure we had um everything situated.
So I will move that we table uh this policy, whatever its number is. Five one 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 uh or um just further uh review um and perhaps edits um and bring it back.
Is there a second?
I second.
Moved by Moira, seconded by Karen, questions, conversations, discussion? All in favor? It is tabled to the next board meeting, thank you very much. That brings us to our next policy, suicide prevention and response policy and procedure. I don't even know that we've assigned a number to this policy yet. Hi Carrie, how are you?
Hi, good evening, uh, my name is Carrie Burke, I'm Director of Health Services and Wellness for the District.
Oh, and I would say, so it's listed on here uh for second reading and adoption. We have not had a first reading, though it has come to the board. So if we move it for second reading and adoption, it requires a two-thirds vote. Approval.
Yep. And just to clarify, it actually would be a first reading and adoption.
First reading.
Questions about the policy, well, should we, we will break with our Robert's rules for a second, ask if there are questions or discussion before we ask if it's gonna be moved. Folks are good. It's a good question to ask at ten thirty at night.
Yes.
So then we'll entertain motions.
Site prevention response policy procedure board, first reading and adoption.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Adam. We will work with um Emily and Tricia to make sure it is appropriately numbered within. Uh, it would probably be the five thousand series, which is a series around students. Um, even though this is a little bit more broad at times, but it's primarily focused on students. Any questions, conversations, debates?
Just a comment, thank you all who worked on this. What we do not join the Board of Education for is to lose our best and brightest to self-injury and harm. So this has been heavy on our hearts for a long time and to have this policy finally be moving towards a resolution to allow more space and grace for adults, for kids, for families, for the community. I can't think of a better way to um go out, so thank you for this.
Also thank you and all who, you and all who worked on it for its scope, its depth, its articulateness uh in addressing a really, really important subject.
Its depth, its articulateness, uh, in addressing a really, really important subject.
Any additional comments? All in favor? The policy is approved and adopted, given that it is a super majority, which it requires for a first reading and adoption. Uh, thank you very much, Carrie, again to everybody else. Thank you, Adam, as well. I know you worked on it. Uh, and a reminder to folks, if we find things that we want to change, any policy at any point in time can be changed. So we can go through there. So we greatly appreciate that. Glad to have that ready for next school year. Um, agenda item eleven point four is EAC Montessori Athletic Mergers. And we will entertain motions.
I move to approve an athletic merger with Elizabeth Ann Kloon Montessori. School for Boys and Girls Modified Sports for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five academic year.
Moved by Moira, seconded by Adam. Questions, conversations?
Done in the past, I'm sorry.
Almost, almost every year.
Yeah.
There are stipulations.
Yeah.
Uh, no student outside of an ICSD school can supplant a student within the ICSD school. Oftentimes our athletic mergers are only what we will call quote unquote non-cut sports. So, um, things like track would be a really good example that we use tra, or cross country. Uh, but yes, we've done this with Montessori in particular, at least as, as long as I can remember. And we've also done athletic mergers with other local school districts, Newfield, Truittman'sburg. Uh, you know, I'm sure a couple of those that I'm forgetting around particular sports, Lansing for particular sports as well. Uh, but usually it comes at the recommendation of our athletic director, um, and collaboration with the leadership of the school or school district that's involved. Did that answer your question, Jill?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Additional question was? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Um, this brings us to agenda item eleven point five. And we will entertain motions.
I move to ratify an agreement between the district and a parent and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the same on behalf of the district.
Second.
Questions, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous for the board members who are present. That brings us to agenda item eleven point six. We'll entertain motions.
I move to ratify an agreement between the district and a parent and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the same on behalf of the district. This is a different one.
Yes.
Second.
Moved by Moira, seconded by Jill. Questions, conversation? All in favor? That is also unanimous. Thank you very much. Um, the New Roots Resolution, we do not have language for. Uh, Mr. Harris, this was raised by you. I know this is your last meeting. If you can give us just thirty seconds of what you were hoping to accomplish, even though we will not address it this evening.
Still planning to send you all the resolution. You don't have to think about it in my absence. Um. Alright, so as I said in the previous meeting. The New Roots kids. For the longest time, since their inception, the majority of those kids have been kids who qualified for being students in this district. Uh, as we know, a check goes with every student whose parent decides for reasons. That we are not privy to to send their children to New Roots. They have asked repeatedly to have access to some of our programming, just like the vote we took tonight. Access to our athletic program. Uh, access to BOSI's programming, access to other things. For those who don't know. Even though they are a separate district with, I believe, students from ten external school districts. We are still considered their home district because we're the eight hundred pound gorilla BOSI's. We've located, geographically located in our district and we happen to be by far the largest district. So we provide them with some critical services, uh, special education services with transportation services. And I believe we started out with, uh, being somewhat responsible for their food, although that might have changed by now. I think there are legal restrictions on us allowing them access to certain things like athletics. However, the BOSI's request, as far as I can tell, there is no legal restriction against that. That's a decision. Decision that the component BOSI's districts has to agree on, a decision that we have to agree on. I've been struggling to find a reason to think that's a bad idea for two years now. We know BOSI's has several vastly under subscribed programs. Why would they not want to allow certain kids to fill those slots? If we do this, it'll be similar to what we just went through. No way a boat, a renewer student is going to knock an Ithaca City School District student out of a particular spot. And we know BOSI's has their own capacity issues, both from a physical plant space and from a programmatic space. But again, they also have several wildly under subscribed programs. That's the thinking. I will do my best to get something with nine whereas is on it before I head, uh, before I sunset out of this wonderful position.
And we will see if other board members will pick it up. So send that language my way and we'll proceed from there or the board will proceed from there. So. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, agenda item eleven point eight is a resolution for an advisory council on revenue exploration. Uh, folks may remember this was a conversation that was held at our last board meeting. Uh, with either being volunteered or selected. Uh, Aaron and Jill and myself were in a email conversation. The resolution is posted on board docs. Um, I will read it briefly, though in a quick conversation with Jill. Um, their idea or suggestion would be to table it. Uh, it would actually make much more sense to having conversation along with the reorganization meeting where we establish any committee that will be for the upcoming year, including this one. But it may be important for folks to hear at least what the current thinking is, and this may change between now and then. But it says, whereas the school district policy two, two, six, zero states that an advisory council or committee organized by the board shall be appointed and discharged by the, by official board resolution. And whereas the Board of Education of the Ithaca City School District seeks the establishment of an advisory council to explore additional revenue options for the district. As well as the established action steps to support negotiations with Cornell University. Regarding significant increase in voluntary contributions to the Ithaca City School District. And whereas once established, the advisory council will meet at least monthly. And the chairs of the committee will update the board on a quarterly basis. And whereas a final report will be produced, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education establishes a council on revenue exploration. That again will be an advisory council, I imagine, along with some others that we will consider at the reorganization meeting. Which I believe will be scheduled for July first, but we'll confirm that as soon as possible. July first. I understand, yeah, it was always scheduled to be July first. There was a error being made. We will follow up with all board members. It is on a Monday. We'll get back to that. We'll follow up. We'll confirm.
Some the appropriate time to suggest a, a retweeting of the wording would be. I want you to try to check my word.
Yeah, uh, you can send it to, to the, all the board members and we put it up on the, uh, agenda. What happened there? Uh, so, but we would need a motion to, to table.
I move that we table, um, resolution, item eleven point eight.
Moved by Jill, or tabled by Jill, seconded by Adam. Discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. That, uh, is also tabled. That brings us to our last agenda item for the evening. Uh, central office contracts. And before that, uh, conversation, we'll entertain additional motions.
I'd like to move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment. History of particular individuals, ongoing negotiations, possible litigation and the annual superintendent evaluation.
Debate, dialogue, questions? All in favor? We will be entering back into executive session. Um, and we'll be back. We'll be back.
Is this, is there a classroom across the way that we can use or list classrooms?
Yep, fantastic.